Her ideas of Laredo, what she looks forward to in the future and why? All the big rust about the street over there in Bartlett. Good morning, Council.
Hi, good morning, Benven. Thank you very much for inviting me.
No, no, thank you for coming. Number one, why, let's talk about who is Nelly Vilma?
Well, I'm a mom, five. I've been in several positions here. I've been a teacher, I've been a counselor at M H M R. I've been a prosecutor, I'm a business owner, I'm an attorney, and ultimately, an advocate for people.
Okay, and why did you decide to run? What was the big change of heart? Was it?
Because I got tired of complaining and I said, if not me, then who's gonna run? I kept on asking, knocking on doors and seeing who was gonna run and I saw that nobody was gonna do it, so I decided to do it.
Well, thank you for doing, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Okay, and so you're an attorney. What kind of attorney are you and do you specialize in?
I do about sixty percent of my practice is immigration and I also do civil and criminal defense as well, since I used to be prosecutor to the other side. And a lot of the times it comes into complex situations where you need to do a little bit of everything. I do investor visas as well, so I bring in a lot of new environments for Laredo, like new investors, new businesses, that I try to bring into the city as well.
Okay, and that's a good, that's, maybe we can ask a couple of questions because we have a lot of changes going on in the near future, especially with immigration and so on and so forth.
Yes.
And where do you see Laredo going? How do you see Laredo growing?
Well, I'm very excited about a lot of the news now that I'm in this side of the aisle, looking at all the possibilities. Of course, we have to be careful of how much we get into, you know, not to promise too much, but to be able to accomplish. For example, this week, we had the possibility of becoming a World Trade Center. That is an awesome, awesome news for Laredo because as it is, we are the number one inland port, which I didn't know before being in office. And just going to visit in the legislative sessions that we've gone to Austin and we've gone to Washington, I realized that a lot of them don't have a clue of where Laredo is, what our numbers are, how much percentage of the gross product that comes into the U.S. comes through Laredo. We had a very good presentation, which is kind of like the arteries that come from Laredo and it's a GPS, I think it was, I want to say a thousand trucks or more, that they put of all the eighteen-wheelers that cross through Laredo. And little by little, you start seeing the red lines of all the highways, all the arteries that Laredo feeds into. And within a week, we were all over the U.S. taking all the product. So many of the people, like for example, one of the top-notch congresspersons that are in the state in the border security issues hadn't been to Laredo, but yet they're making decisions as to how much funding to allocate. And so that's why we're trying to bring in the perspective from our city, you know, how much we need this, how much we don't want a wall, how that will interfere just with our neighboring relationship with Mexico, how much we have this dependency. Our economy depends on both, you know. We're affected when the peso devaluates and we don't want our downtown to close any more shops, you know, like we've seen. So we have to have a good balance and try to have growth and not put all our eggs in one basket. Have to diversify the economy and so that's why we're looking at other avenues of growth for Laredo.
You talked about the legis, some of the legislatures that were trying to put together the security of the wall. They didn't even come to Laredo.
No, we invited them.
Who are those that are all together and they're involved? Is it just, is it a committee?
Yes.
Is it a committee of both Republicans, Democrats?
Correct, yes. On both, on both levels, at the state and at the federal level, we realized, of course, that there's committees, but the ones having to do with border security, a lot of them were not aware of how vital it is for us to have a good communication.
You know, I believe in security. I believe in preventing the future, okay? I'm for better security. I'm all for four-wall. If we need it, put it. If we don't need it, don't put it. Now, Texas has huge differences in terrain.
Yes.
So to spend the money for the type of wall that is needed, it's gonna, it's gonna bear. But now you have Southern California and Arizona and New Mexico where you need a wall.
Correct.
Or a fence or a better structure. Yes, that is.
Yes.
And so, you know, on parts like that, you need it.
Yes, and parts that make sense. Like here, for example, we had a meeting with Congressman Cuellar and we had people also from Zapata, like how are we gonna stop, you know, the flow of the Zapata Lake, for example, you know? They need to look at the terrain.
Amistad?
Yes, amistad, amistad also del río. So there's a lot of areas where it doesn't make sense. The Big Bend, like hello, you're not gonna put a wall there, you know?
Have you been over there?
Yes, yes.
It's, it's, it's awesome. It's awesome. Well, you can't, the terrain-wise, what are you gonna do?
Yes, and it messes up the ecology, it messes up everything, you know, for our, you know, livestock as well. So they need to take a lot of things into consideration, not just the whim of somebody saying, "I want a wall." I understand, like for example, in Yuma, and I did travel with the city about, I want to say a month and a half ago, to the same facility that President Trump visited last week. We went there because we're trying to bring in an expansion here for the air marine, which is the backup operations for Border Patrol and CVP. And they're here, but they're kind of crowded and we need funding. We need to try to have more of the helicopter-run operations that they do. And so this was the prime location and we went to Yuma and we're trying to see if we can have allocations for that as well, which will bring in more jobs as well.
That's exactly right because more of the helicopters, more of that aerial surveillance is what's actually needed. More boots on the ground.
Boots on the ground. That's what we said when we went to Washington and Austin, that that will be having a virtual wall, which is what we want to call our concept of having the paved road along the Vega, having the sensors, the cameras, the drones, the, you know, helicopters. It's gonna be a multiplier of force that is gonna be cheaper and it's gonna make more sense.
And it's still, I mean, if they put a road, you're still going into people's property, you're still doing all that stuff and it's still gonna come into that. So with eminent domain, they're gonna get taken anyway. So folks that live on the river better get used to it because, you know, something's gonna happen.
Yes.
And, and that security is needed. If we save one kid from getting into drugs, it's well spent.
Yes, and for example, a council member, Algo, was mentioning some of the areas in his district, from the Father Magna Bowl to another area, there's no connecting line. So then let's say you caught somebody with drugs, they went into the brush and how do you find them? You have to go all the way around. By that time, they already skirted to a house or back to Mexico. So it makes sense as far as the enforcement side of it, to have the visibility and that would be better, you know, for security purposes as well.
Excellent. Now let's touch base on another issue that's been around and I'll bring it up. Bartlett, what happened with Bartlett? Because two, a couple of shows ago, we had Mr. Chanoldrete and we had Mercurio Martinez III, who was committee chair of Transportation and Safety.
Okay.
They were saying it was just decided one day. Nobody, and I was the first one that said, "We're not blaming you." I blame directors in departments. The reason I blame directors in departments is this. We can have a councilwoman or man enter.
Councilmember. Gender neutral.
Gender neutral, well, okay, councilmember. And you get, you get them for four years and they're still gonna be there. Eight years till yesterday. So you have a bunch of these de facto little chiefs, if you want to put them that way, that have been there twenty years, fifteen years, twenty, twenty-five years, and they still are not out. And they go with the same type of thing. "Oh, look, I will know in a bit, we'll do our own thing." What actually happened?
Well, there, what happened back in January, I think, one of the first things that, since I live in the district and I have that triangle of dropping off kids in that area, the big need was a light at Gil and Thomas. And so I had requested that back in the city council in January twenty-six, twenty-seven, around there. And together with that, I was asking for the improvement of the flow for Bartlett. So what was approved at that city council meeting was the light for Bartlett at Gil and the light for Bartlett at Carlton. And so I didn't know that it takes a while to do all these things. You know, I come from the business side where I want things done yesterday and so it's the bureaucracy of things, right? But also, once we were able to get that light into place, the Traffic Department Director, which is Traffic and Safety Department Director, was looking also at the information provided by the Federal Highway Administration Department, who conducted a two-year study of Laredo and the accident data, which is posted at the City of Laredo website. On my section, I posted all the Bartlett data as far as crash accidents. So this was, this didn't go through council or anything. This was just a decision that Mr. Murillo did to create a protected lane. And we had had, I think, I don't remember the month, but it was already during my term, we had an accident involving an ambulance at the corner of Bustamante and Bartlett. So it's the lifeline of Laredo. I mean, many times when you drive through Bartlett, there's an ambulance and you have to move out of the way. And so it's important to have that protected lane because as he explained in the most recent meeting that they had with the Traffic Department Committee, that's what is called a yellow trap in the traffic engineering terms. So basically, you don't have a protected lane. The line in front of you doesn't know where you're going and that's gonna cause an accident. So he decided to have a yellow designated protected lane. And that one coincided all the way to Jackoman because Jackoman already has that. So they decided to print the yellow line all along so that we wouldn't have this weaving in and out and causing other accidents. Because whenever people were gonna turn, let's say, they were gonna turn to the VA clinic, well, they will stop in the middle of the road and they will have rerans or they were gonna stop, you know, at another intersection. So that's why they decided to run it all the way to Jackoman because that was the alignment already of a turning lane. Now, in the process and listening also to the constituents' request, I did ask them to reevaluate and monitor. And I will go in my lunch hour, I will be videotaping at the corners when all these changes were done, sending emails to the appropriate departments. And I did ask for them to reevaluate that turning lane. So as of last week, you know, the week before, they took off that turning lane to Nowhere that was called, which was from after Hillside and all the way to Jackoman, except at the corners where there is already the light, like at the park, you know, that park light, you still have to go into the protected lane so people know where you're going. But the other one beyond the park and going to Jackoman, that one's back to the two lanes. Now, last week, I had a couple of meetings again and I keep on monitoring and that's one thing that, from talking to the people like Mr. Alder, the last time I told him, "I keep on monitoring, I'm gonna continue to monitor." He's like, "You're lying." I'm like, "Monitoring doesn't mean lying. Monitoring means I'm looking at it. I'm not an expert in this field. I'm not a traffic engineer." You know, that's not one of my degrees, unfortunately. And they made fun of about that in Facebook. But I'm gonna listen to the experts in the field because I don't have that expertise. So what happened this last week, I was asking them also about the visibility because I drop off my son at Harmony, I get at Carlton and Bartlett and there's no visibility. The fence of the school coming westbound affects the visibility. So they're looking at that, at having to move the fence back. So then little foquito goes off and I said, "Okay, if we're gonna move the fence back, can we open it up?" Which now I found out in the engineering terms means flare out the corner. So we're looking at that and they said, as a matter of fact, there was a previous study that we had done, I don't know how many years ago, like eight, ten years ago. Let me pull that out. Because if you notice on San Man, like right after San Martin, they had started to widen and then it stopped. So I'm hoping that we can widen that corner and leave intact a middle box for turning, once we get that light. In the meantime, and continuing to monitoring the process, there's been people that still make a stop. Like we're creatures of habit and we're still making that stop and that was, there was some near accidents. So for safety purposes, they decided to put back the stoplight and that I was, you know, in agreement with that because we don't want any accidents and also because they need to start working on the light. So there's a lot of things that, like I mentioned, like I think it can be done right away and it can't. There's a lot of things that need to go underground as far as all the lines for the lighting. There were several months also, a process of getting the right-of-way for the right lane, right turning lane at Carlton going south. And that I'm trying to see if we can expand it because as they explained to me last week, if I'm asking for this flare, we need to have enough room on the side of that empty road so that there's kind of, it's called like a box for the cars that are gonna turn. So this is the next process that is coming, that light. And then ultimately, the synchronization of the lights from the Bustamante there all the way to Jackoman.
So basically, Murillo's a director's name?
Mr. Murillo made that decision and, you know, he's the expert in the field. He looked at the data, which is, it was the fifth highest crash.
Correct, no, 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 that's understood. Does Murillo have to go before a committee, before he makes a change? Or can he just do the changes by himself?
The, I don't know exactly. I know that the committees are advisory and ultimately, it goes to city council. But there is some things that have not gone to committee. And so for that, I learned from my predecessor, for example, the median that was Wyoming and McPherson in front of Sonic, which I was also blamed for taking it off, which I did not make any decisions there. That one didn't even go through council, okay? Even though there was money spent on that median, but I did dig up and got information about it. The recommendation from Mr. Murillo was a hundred feet median. But that would have interfered with the exit from that business, from Sonic. So the former council member decided to cut it to about sixty feet. That didn't, that didn't serve the purpose because it was also placed at the corner. So you have adjacent traffic from two streets and in the middle, so you're not really protecting the children that are crossing there. So what I had done is I sent an email to Mr. Murillo and I said, "I have several people complaining that there's been more accidents after the median," which in fact was validated, he sent me an email afterwards. And I said, "Can you please check into that or check what adjustments need to be done for that crossing?" Within two weeks, I started getting calls that, "Oh, thank you for taking off the median and I didn't make any decisions. It didn't come before city council." But their department is Traffic and Safety. So if they go and look at the numbers and there's all these accidents that were caused by it, I don't think they need to, you know, make all this havoc and they need to remediate the problem. So that's what they did. And I think that's why that decision was done as far as the turning lane for safety. I think safety should prevail in all the decisions that are made.
Excellent, but it still has to go to council eventually?
Some of the things have to go to council, others don't. Because we don't micromanage as far as the charter. I can't even go directly to tell Mr. Murillo, "Do X." Because that's the city manager, right? So whatever they do, it's with approval of the city manager. If it's something that is outside their budget or that they need additional approval, that's when it comes to us. Yes.
Well, thank you for explaining.
Thank you.
And thank you for explaining. Here goes another, another one. We live in the border. We have, all of us have family in Nueva Laredo, majority, you know? We have a lot of kids that are here, born here. Their parents were born in Mexico. They never became citizens, they're still here. How are these laws going to affect it? Now, we have a couple of laws coming up here in Texas, right? The SB four?
It takes effect this Friday.
And what, explain the immigration law, federal immigration law. Because it's your federal, you're an immigration attorney. What does it state there? If a person comes in here legally, what has to happen to that person? If he gets caught or deported or?
Illegally.
Illegally.
Okay. Under the federal immigration, if a person has come here illegally, it depends on the situation and it depends if the reason why they came or if they have any other relief. That's what we call it in deportation court. So let's say, for example, that I came here illegally because they shot my husband or they raped my daughter or something like that. Then I can ask and seek asylum or refugee, then I'm fine. It could be other victims of different crimes and that's another area of the law that provides protections. But we still need to go through a judge or an administrative process. There's other persons in the country that if they entered illegally, but they had been petitioned before or they're married to a U.S. citizen or a resident or have a child that is a U.S. citizen or a resident, they qualify with an immigration judge. If they have been here for over ten years and they don't have any criminal record, they may qualify for reprieve, which will be a cancellation of a removal proceeding if they have this good moral character. Under the federal criminal side of it, there is, it's a crime. Like I tell my clients, es un crimen pisarzacate, you know? It's a crime just to come in illegally and it could be a misdemeanor, which is an illegal entry and it's a federal crime and it's punishable, I think, I think it's up to a year. And, or it could be a felony. If they have a previous removal or deportation by a judge and they come back to the states, it's up to about seventy-two months and I think there were some other increases with the recent changes in the punishment sentencing. So it is a very serious offense.
Now, here, living in the border, we know that there's a drug war going on for many years.
Of course.
When many families come here and they, can they seek asylum?
Yes, and no, depending on who you ask, okay? And this is more of a political stance because if you go with anybody that, that is gonna be representing Mexico, we are not in political ambience where we're gonna admit that there is a problem, okay?
In other words, the Mexican government's not gonna admit that there's a problem.
Correct.
Of course.
So then a lot of people seek help in that regard and they're gonna be denied. But if you come to the U.S. and you provide proof, which is also very difficult because as you know, if something happened in Mexico, they can't call the police, they can't make a report. And the immigration judge, that's what they wanna see, that you made a report, that there is some proof and so it's very difficult.
It's not gonna happen. And it doesn't happen in people that were in Bosnia, they're over here. It's not gonna happen with the guys in Syria, they're gonna over here as well, you know? We just, you know, who? In fact, that's worse. Who knows what? You know what I'm saying? But here in, in Nueva Laredo, there's a lot of families, there's a lot of businesses that were affected by that.
Of course.
And now they're here, many.
Yes.
And, you know, everybody, I guess in the early, in this part of the century, you know, in two thousand four to about two thousand eight, everybody was running from the setas, everybody was here.
That's true.
All the businesses, boom, todos vinieron para acá.
Yep.
And they were being extorted over there, so on and so forth.
Correct.
Could those people get asylum because of that?
Well, what we do with a lot of those businesses, they have qualified either for an L visa, which means if you had another, like the mother business over there and you come and do an affiliate or subsidiary, then you qualify for an L visa. Some of them qualify under the NAFTA, which is also under threat right now. You know, trata libre comercio. We've been able to bring a lot of accountants to businesses locally, a lot of IT personnel, people that have the qualifications. It could be that you studied in Mexico, Canada, or the U.S., you qualify under NAFTA. And some people, if they do have documentation of this type of abuse or, I mean, they killed your relative or they kidnapped you and things like that, then they can have ample proof to be able to get into asylum. And an asylum can be done affirmatively as long as it's filed within less than one year of getting into the U.S. Or it could be done with an immigration court and if it's beyond the one year, then we go into withholding or what's it, Convention Against Torture as well.
Okay, okay, okay. And because that is, that is very much prevalent, especially here on the border.
Yes. One of the things that we need to clarify though, and I did last year with when Cispan, Washington Journal came to Laredo, I clarified a lot of the myths because this is what affects us nationwide, you know? They're looking at, "Oh, it's Mexico. All the illegals are here from Mexico." And it's not true.
There's a lot of illegals from all over.
Yeah, there's a lot of illegals from other countries and so.
There's Canadian families here that have been here illegally for many, very long time.
That's right.
Only because they have blond hair, blue eyes and run around back and forth.
Correct, yes, we have from Asia, from Canada, from Europe. Everywhere, but we are the ones pretty much in the postcard of illegals.
But there's no law that, that is now that says, "Let's segregate or separate Mexicans because Mexicans are there under federal law," right?
No, but let's look at the SB four, for example. Who do you think they're gonna stop and ask for papers? Somebody with that's blond and blue eyes or somebody that's our color of skin?
But they do that anyway. I mean, we grew up with that. "The Border Patrol, they're in donde eres." You know, "Where are you from?" You get them guys in the mall and the bicycles telling people outside, "Donde eres?" You know, it's so profiling, please. So that's either...
Yeah, I've been working with that.
You know, we live, we live with that, you know?
But now let's look at the whole of Texas. So if you go more or the, you know, the Panhandle or you go to Dallas. I mean, my husband went to college in Dallas and there was still an era in the eighties where Mexicans were not served at several restaurants.
Believe me, I went, I went, I went, I went through the whole thing. I remember in college, I'll tell you, "When did you come here? When did your family arrive to the United States?" Well, my family didn't arrive to the United States. The United States arrived to my family.
Yes.
You know, they came this way. You know, and they come to the United States, so the United States came to my family.
Eight of the states, yes.
But that's the way, that's the way it is, you know? And they're proud of that history too.
Yeah, that history is something that we need to relate to our children because many times, they lack those roots and they don't know how to defend and they think, "Oh yeah, it's true what we hear in the mainstream media," you know? But they need to know their roots as well.
And, you know, Texas has, you know, we had a bunch of Latinos. We had, were called Texicans. A lot of people didn't know that. And even the blond-eyed, blue eyes were called Texicans up until the Hollywood movie in forty-five, which is called The Texan.
Okay.
And said, "Oh, eso todos eran Texan." And then all of a sudden, "Somos texanos," you know?
Yes, I wish I could take the class that Dr. Thompson is giving at Tumio with all the history, but I just can't this semester.
No, he's a good man.
Yes.
But, you know, so it's interesting how it is, you know? Pero, here goes another one. What's SB four?
SB four is the law that took effect and that is starting on...
That's when it took effect?
Well, well, it was passed, but it's gonna take effect this Friday, September the first, whereby the detention, detainer that ICE requests has to be abided by, by any law enforcement agency if the person is in the jail, which we're already doing with security communities. It's already there. The thing that expands is that they have to ask for immigration status. Any law enforcement agent and even campus police has that right, starting on Friday, to ask for immigration status if they have somebody detained, not even arrested, detained, they can, they can ask.
They can ask. But they, but they kinda did that anyway, you know? Police kinda do that anyway.
Some of them did, but, but it was not...
It was in the discretion, they can ask. I mean, it's still a crime.
But that's not their purview or jurisdiction, you know? And so that now it makes it legal. But then you have some rogue agent that, you know, could take it further. And what this law does is that, once it takes effect, we cannot legislate against it. We cannot put any boundaries, we cannot put any stop or any type of policies regarding immigration enforcement. So that's where our hands are gonna be cut, starting on Friday. As a city, you know, sheriffs, police, government, we cannot even change policy. And what this law has is that it has more teeth than the Arizona show me your papers law because it's gonna call for a Class A misdemeanor if anybody doesn't follow it. It could be the police chief, it could be the sheriff or anybody else. And also elected officials, if we try to make any policy against it, we could lose our seat, which is, I think, an affront on democracy because then...
What do you mean, lose your seat? So if you're opposed and you can lose your seat?
Yes.[1707.86] Because that's an affront, I think, on democracy. Who's gonna fight for the rights of the people that are gonna be targeted by racial profiling?
Racial profiling is one thing. Protecting law-abiding citizens is another.
And that should be the priority.
Legal citizens, right? We're not supposed to be taken care of. If you're an illegal, you already committed a crime. So you understand what I'm saying? So now we have to decipher, where is it like you explained? Did it go into, are you here because you need to be here? Are you here because you're asylum, because you're going through the problems? Then we have to protect those. I think there's a humanitarian right to that. But I see this. At the ranch years ago, we found a young illegal. Ended up breaking his leg. And we started helping. We called Border Patrol. Border Patrol agents arrived, were evidence of all accounted. And they said, they started asking him, did they hit you? Did they break you? Wait a minute, we're helping him. So we almost got into trouble. My father's a physician. He told me, you know, it's a good Samaritan law. I'm telling you, that sheriff arrived. And he said, from now on, call us. And I've found half-dead. I've found some that are lost beyond belief. I've found a couple that were from Brazil. One of them had been bitten by fire and so bad that he couldn't walk anymore. And I will call the sheriff. I won't call the Border Patrol. I will call the sheriff. Why? Because the sheriffs will give them more help than what the Border Patrol actually does. Okay? And why? Because that's what they're looking for. And I didn't know that we were in a line where a lot of the neighbors, that's how they live, they pick up the illegals and they take them to San Antonio and so on and so forth. Loti, 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 you know?
Yeah, well, my issue with this enforcement from the sheriff, PD, campus police perspective is that they don't have the training as to what is a proper immigration document or status or who may or may not qualify. They could be a victim or not, or they could be under a temporary status. So who's gonna train them to know and make the difference, know how to make the difference and to avoid litigation for us? Because now we're gonna be at risk of stopping a US citizen and detaining them just because they don't have the papers or somebody that actually had their documents. That's why, that's the purview of the feds. They're the ones that are trained. They go to an academy of months long to learn about immigration.
But believe me, what you just said, I'm pretty sure within the next month, you're gonna have a lot of classes being taught, especially for these officers.
After the five.
In fact, you know, so believe me, there's gonna be a lot of training going on, more so than you believe.
Of course. I've prepared a training and I've done it a few times, but I'm hopeful still that some of it will be ruled unconstitutional.
Some of the guys, you know? What gets me is this. We have a lot of Border Patrol here and everybody has some help at the house. A lot of them are illegals. And even the Border Patrol has them, you know? There's a hypocrisy.
Yes.
That I just don't, I don't see, you know? Either we're gonna do it right or don't do it at all.
Yes. And then prioritizing also, like you were mentioning, the crimes. Because if PD is gonna be now stuck with checking papers and doing the work for the feds, then when are they gonna be able to investigate and do the protection of our citizens?
You know what should happen? And you just throw it back at the feds, you know? They get a stop card? Oh, he doesn't have them, but he does the thing. Call the feds. Adios. Leave. That's what's gonna start happening. PD is gonna stop and then they're gonna call Border Patrol, like they usually do. And then all of a sudden, money.
And that's the issue with a lot of mistakes. I mean, just in my little practice, within the last five years or so, I started keeping records. And I have over, I wanna say for this month, hopefully they approve tomorrow, about 22 people that were deported unlawfully because they were actually US citizens. But immigration is quote-unquote civil, so you don't get an attorney when you're detained in a pseudo jail, but it's a civil detention. So a lot of people don't know how to look for their ancestry or know that they have this right to citizenship. And I've had, in my experience, at least 22 people, that those mistakes were done by people that were trained and even by judges of immigration. So I anticipate a lot of mistakes.
Understood. Let me tell you this. I'm married to a Brazilian. She's immigrating in here. We're going through the whole process. So do it correctly, number one. I don't like this, that I've been living here 30 years, I have a great, all my children are US citizens, this whole stuff, blah, 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 blah. And all of a sudden, you get detained and you're getting deported. And you have an excellent business. You could have paid an attorney to go get this out of the way.
Yeah. If they qualify.
There's a, how can I put it? There's, if one can do it, anybody should be able to do it.
That is correct to an extent. It depends on when they try to do it, okay? Because when I was in law school back in 2001, I graduated, and I was in the immigration clinic since 99. I've been doing immigration. I realized, and that's why I switched gears to immigration, I realized that there were a lot of laws that are exposed facto because they're not citizens, so they can be retroactively affecting somebody that might have committed, maybe I, you know, I had a client, a grandma that stole jeans and earrings when she was like 17. So now, like 25 years later, she was in deportation because of that mistake, which back then wasn't deportable, but since the law changed, now it's retroactive. And so you have issues like that or you have issues, for example, of the way that the laws have been done. And primarily, I've seen a lot of, I will call it discrimination against Mexico, okay?
Is it Mexico or Latin America? And I'll tell you why in a little bit.
I would say Latin America because they're Western Hemisphere, but in the table of visa backlogs, Mexico is the only country from Latin America that is affected since the 70s. So the law changed in 77. We used to have a system which was called the Western Hemisphere System. So if I married and when I immigrate my family, everybody comes in, even kids after born on the date of my marriage, that's the date that everybody, yeah, they sit on, right? Comes in. But in 77, they changed the law. And so they said, there's this process now because we're gonna allocate so many visas per country. Well, of course, if you're next to the US, you have a lot of family, like you said, the river divided us, of course, there's this connectivity. There's gonna be a higher rate of immigration, but yet we don't have a higher number of visas. So we have a backlog and it remained from there. There was a lawsuit where, the Silva lawsuit, that a lot of people were able to gain their retroactivity. But let's say, for example, when I was in law school, if I, as a legal permanent resident, wanted to petition my spouse or my kids under 21, let's say, you know, the people that came from agriculture, whatever, they, the turning around time was about seven years, eight years of wait. So might as well get a divorce, you know? You're not gonna last over here working seven or eight years without your wife or your kids. So that's where the problem started trickling in, like, you know, my wife is about to have a child. I wanna have him here. They will bring him in. And that's where our backlogs in the visas created a lot of this problem as well.
Now, you know, we have, we deal with a lot of sports. One of my businesses is sports. So I've always inviting people from other countries for martial arts. And I've seen that in South America, there's a different perspective on a person applying for a visa to come in, in certain countries. Okay? In comparison to.
More welcoming.
Yeah, than France or in Europe, okay? And in France, you don't need, well, you get a visa, just like if I show my passport when I go over there. But especially in Brazil, you have to get a tourist visa. Okay? Now, what I've seen, some of them, you have to produce that you have money. You have to produce that you have a job. You have to produce that you have, how can I say? Property that you're gonna go back to.
The financial roots.
Roots, right, right? But then you go to, they make it so hard that, you know, Brazil's the size of the United States, that they have to go from one town, like say, Laredo, and you're set to go to the consulate in New York City. Well, then you have to pay to go to the consulate in New York City. You take all your documentation. And then you show it and they say, oh, you're not. Okay? You didn't make it. Then you start wondering, why? Oh, you didn't make it because you didn't go to this monitoring middleman agency.
Oh.
¿Entendes? And I'm pretty sure it happens in Mexico as well, you know? In Mexico, if it's in Mexico and we understand that there's a corruption level there, things are gonna change a little bit different. Some people are gonna get in here, well, they will be down here in the bottom of the stack, Arapentha UCM over here, while others.
Yeah.
And that's never going, that, those problems are not going to change until those managements of those agencies, and I'm talking about the US consulate agencies, are not reevaluated and, like Trump says, drain the swamp and drain the swamp completely. Because I cannot, I see a double standard, especially for Latinos. This is like the gentleman from Africa that brought in Ebola. He was supposed to six months to get a visa and within 72 hours, he was already in Miami. Understand what I'm saying? And he got it. So there's a difference, there's a double standard. And until we, until those countries do not stand up. Why is that? Some of them told me, one of the customers I did chase in Brazil, explained to me that the reason Brazil doesn't cross over like France and so on and so forth is because the airports are not suitable for the security standards of the American aviation. I don't know if that's true or not. I said, okay, what have you? France is and some of the other countries are. Understand what I'm saying? I mean, Chile, the same thing that happens. We tried to bring in a karate instructor from Chile and the first thing, boom, denied, denied, denied. Some don't, some.
But maybe also depends on why they're coming. If they, they have what is the 214B, like if they have any notion that they might stay or any, it's more of their subject.
I think it's more like what a lot of people in Brazil are saying. It's kinda like, there's 30 people and all of a sudden, three people show up and it's kinda like, you know, no, no, yes, you know, no, no, yes, you know, kinda thing.
Because we have other types of visas for that, for entertainment, which are the O and the P visas. And it depends on the level of their exposure. They have international acclaim. They're able to come in and they're able to stay or come and do a, you know, a workshop.
And go back or whatever, yeah. That's good to know. But I think, in that sense, especially in Mexico, I think that's where the problem lies. If they would just, guess what, get rid of everybody there and start from scratch and I think a lot of that backlog would change.
Yeah. The backlog we have right now, it's on our side because we don't have enough. And there's this push for immigration reform, but I think it's not well-supported because it will completely shut off some of the family petitions. And it's repetitive of what we already have. We already have investor visas, we already have professional visas. So I think it's just expanding on that. But maybe something like, Canada is good, a merit system where, you know, what are you bringing in and what is your education? And you don't have a criminal record, like that gives you extra points, things of that nature. That's gonna help. Even, for example, the agricultural visas, it's H2A. It's usually a push and the farmers go to a different country and they bring people, right? And I thought, for the most part, that it was working great. And I thought, well, this might be expanded. And it may very well be expanded under this presidency. But I sat in at the meeting for the migrant, Texas Migrant Council last week. And one of them was a farmer, one of the board members, and he was saying, it's very different when you have a farming family that has been there, that knows the fields, that takes care of the pruning carefully, to where you bring, you know, 50 guys from Guatemala, whatever, Mexico, whatever country. They're just, yeah, dijo, you can just pass and you see, that one was an H2A field and this one is a family done field. And then again, the crime rate in the communities that they go to. I mean, it's all single male, male, and they're gonna be looking for entertainment and there's gonna be crimes, fights, what have you. So we need to look at that also, that aspect of immigration when we expand some of these visas. It's not just, oh, what's good for the agriculture, you know, it's gonna be good for the US as well. So there's a lot of balancing acts there as well.
And everything, you know, that, what you just said, there's a lot of single males that are gonna come in, they're gonna be there, isn't it? The quote's going on with these refugees from the Middle East.
Yes, that's true.
You know, there's no vetting process. They're just throwing them in here and wait a minute.
One thing I would like to mention, though, taking advantage of the space, is the DACAs. The DACA, there's also deferred action for, deferred action for children arrivals. I forget the acronym, but it's pretty much the children that came in under 16 illegally to the US that were brought in by their parents, but they don't have status. Some of them have, might have come two months old or five years old, what have you. A lot of them have grown up here. All that is missing is, there are pledge allegiance every day, but they don't have the paper.
And not only that, a lot of them don't speak Spanish.
Correct. They've never been to their country.
And they don't speak Spanish. They're, and you see them. On that sense, they're here, they're good citizens, so on and so forth, there should be some type of change to correct that status.
Yes.
Now, if they're gonna remove all those, apparently, you know, can't. You have a lot of them that have gone into the military.
Yes, that's true. They have, you know, sacrifices.
They're excellent soldiers and a lot of them gave their most, which is their life or freedoms.
That's true.
And I was under the impression that if you did go to the army, you, at the end of your term, you were gonna become a US citizen. That's not the case, is it?
Well, I do have a couple of boys here from Laredo that they came in and their family was a victim of violence, their mom was a victim of violence. So I had gotten them under a U visa. And then I was able to get them residency, but they wanted to give back so badly to the community because they had received, you know, all these supplies and shoes and everything. They were very poor. So they thought, how can we give back? They wanted to join the military and they were denied in several branches. Until we made them residents, they started training with the Marines. And as soon as they did their boot camp, the day before the graduation, they both were sworn in as US citizens. And it's a great story that we have.
I have a student that's been with me off and on and, young lad now, he's a man now. And he was born here, Laredo, to a midwife, born from a midwife. To what it seems to be of a underage girl at a timeframe when that was not accepted. So they took the baby and they gave it to the lady that used to clean the house, the maid.
Oh.
Okay? Lived here and then she moves back. Comes back and he went through high school and everything. Tries, believing he was a US citizen. He is a US citizen. Was told he was born here. Goes and tries to join the Marines and he said, where are your papers? Goes to school. Well, yeah, I was here. Here's where I went to school, here's where I went to this. They didn't accept him. He's married and so on and so forth. Now, they did an investigation. The midwife is deceased. The mom that raised him is deceased. So now he's in a state of limbo that nobody knows what to do.
Is there any other witnesses? Because in those cases, what I've done is I delayed per certificate through court. We go to court and we take the affianced that can relay the story, how it happened and there were witnesses to that.
So, you know, we've been trying to pick them up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably a delayed per certificate. One of the things on the DACAs, I did post on my Facebook, via my law firm, some advising, you know, for them, because we're on a deadline. The lawsuit that was in the valley against the Obama executive order, there is an impasse right now and the lawsuit deadline is for September the 5th. So Attorney General Paxton and 10 other attorney generals told President Bush pretty much an ultimatum.
Bush, President Trump.
I mean, Trump, I'm sorry. Trump an ultimatum to do away with the executive order or they're gonna file suit. So it seems like the administration might do away with DACA. And so I put several scenarios there of how they can try to get assistance or have their emergency planning, because we have a lot of these kids. We have a lot of professionals. We even have a doctor, a lawyer, priests that are DACAs. And that's the face of the US.
And if you've been here, we need to help them out, number one, because they've grown up with us.
And they came through no fault of their own. It's the sins of their fathers and they shouldn't be paying for that.
Number one, I wanna thank you for coming here.
Thank you for your time.
And thank you for explaining this, because this is, and hopefully people out there can